It's in about eight more minutes. The city meeting, Jack? Yeah, it's today. We're starting in about eight minutes.
My neighbor is across the street. Oh, yeah. He didn't complain about your painting. He didn't complain about the painting.
I'm trying to figure out.
You think my neighbor is across the street? Oh, yeah. He didn't complain about your painting. He didn't complain about the painting.
I'm trying to figure out.
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 Let's get this over here.
You want to say three?
But that's what happens.
His wife is not a student.
I'll do this.
My neighbor is across the street.
Oh, yeah. He didn't complain about your painting.
He didn't complain about the 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 painting.
He had to be nice to the news. I called Jack, you forgot. That's up to you. What if I was asked? Go ahead. Yes, sir. Okay. Just call us meeting order and we can do it. Quiet. We don't call this meeting. Everybody let it quiet where we can let this meeting. Okay. Meeting, uh, call us meeting order. I'll let the city commission Tuesday, July the 19th, 2016. First thing we have is an invocation. If everybody will please stand this minute and we'll give our invocation. Heavenly Father, as we come here tonight, Father, seeking answers in our, our community, in our little city, as a fan, Father, help us put it on our hearts, the answers to all the things that we need to figure out. Help guide us to become unified as a city. Help guide us towards the, down the path to the goals, Father, that you have in mind for us. And in all the things that we do, and in all the things, Father, that we decide this evening, that will be done in Christ's name. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's roll call show that the four commissioners are here. And a city manager and a city attorney.
We got Mr. Taylor, Brian, sitting in for Quinn tonight.
Okay. Okay, let's, uh, have a, is there any, any corrections to our minutes of the last meeting at five and seventeen, and six and seven? Is there any corrections to the minutes?
My promotion that was accepted, three changes that is made in the schedule or maybe missed.
Three changes, that and our package of three changes.
Yes, I have not seen the minutes before they went out. There's a few changes in there in red ink. So you're actually accepting the March 17th meeting and the, uh, May, I'm sorry, and the special call meeting of June 17th.
Okay, let's have a motion and second for approval of a special call meeting. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay. Minutes approved. Uh, awards and presentations and appointments tonight. And, uh, first item on our agenda is item eight, is a presentation to me, this George Vessel. That will be out, uh, from the city manager, Kate Cott.
So happy to see you here. I ran into, uh, Mr. Vessel's sister, Marva, and asked if she would attend as well. We just wanted to, she, she's back here. We just wanted to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Vessel and we have this that the city has prepared. And it's this picture that hung in city hall in the years, uh, he was here as vice mayor. And that's for you to take home with you.
And I just want to say also, I appreciate this going on.
Absolutely. This is from the city, from the commission. Um, everybody wanted you to, to have it. And I'm just gonna say a couple of things. Um, I've written this before, but the city was saddened by the loss of the vice mayor, George Vessel, who passed away in June 19th, ironically Father's Day. Uh, he was a tremendously educated commissioner. He was an accomplished musician. He had a real love of the city of Mount Pleasant and its people. He was an army veteran and an advocate for the employees. He had a tender spot in his heart for the elderly and a not so fortunate, he will be missed. His wife Judith and his daughter Connie had a great celebration of his life. Uh, we had a wonderful prayers from Ed Brennan at that service. The only thing that bothered us is we didn't know he could cook. And we learned that he cooked breakfast every morning and he never offered that to any of us. Now that we know that, we would have, we would have said something about that. But Mrs. Vessel has started a fund at the region's bank with the hope to collect donations to complete the school crosswalk on Main Street that was such a concern to him because he was so concerned about the safety of the children. And we're working on that and we will continue to work on that with the family. But bottom line is, I know that the one thing that you would want me to share is Mount Pleasant was so important to him.
Yes, he believed Mount Pleasant was the temple of the youth.
A temple of the, and he might even come up with a saying.
And I can tell you, uh, I changed jobs so that I could come get four times to him. And when we lived in Nashville, he came every weekend. He loved.
I remember that California to Mount Pleasant was quite a move.
And we lived in Nashville and we came every weekend.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. He loved, he loved his people and the people he served. And I'm just so happy to have an opportunity to be vice mayor.
We are too. We are too. So we're, it's, we are so glad that both you and Connie could be here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, there you go. Thank you so much for coming.
Oh, thank you.
to get out. We did that on purpose.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our next item. Under presentation and appointment, uh, we have swearing in to do tonight. Uh, we're gonna swear in a firefighter named Josh Kelly. If, uh, Mr. Kelly will step up to the roster.
I believe some of these people we're swearing in have family here. We're glad to see the family here. And this is a process, a practice that we're gonna continue. I know he's been here for a while, but we just haven't had a chance to swear him in yet.
I, Josh Kelly.
I, Josh Kelly.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
Named in the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Named in the charter in the city of Mount Pleasant.
For the office of a member of the fire department.
Of the office of a member of the fire department.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I'm about to assume.
That I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Tennessee.
And of the state of Tennessee.
That I will comply with.
And that I will comply with.
And observe.
And observe.
The provisions of the charter.
The provisions of the charter.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Kelly was here quite, quite some time, part-time. He deserved his stay here as a full-time firefighter.
Thank you. We can do without this.
Next, we're going to the police department. We've got three police officers to swear in tonight. Jesse Owens, Thomas Gray, and Freddie Hart.
You're gonna do the first swearing in here. Yeah.
We'll do, I'll just call your name one time and then I'll, I'll let you all repeat it, call it one time. Do it all at once. I.
I, Freddie Hart.
Thomas Gray.
Jesse Owens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
Named in the charter.
Named in the charter.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
For the office.
For the office.
Of a member of the police department.
Of a member of the police department.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Which I'm about to assume.
Which I'm about to assume.
That I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state of Tennessee.
That I will comply with.
That I will comply with.
And observe the provisions.
And observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chief, you get in. Get in the car. This is how you wanna do. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll introduce the Parkson Rec. to be not getting sworn in. We have one other new employee, our first ever Parks and Rec director, Mr. Thomas Kenny, who's here tonight. He, he doesn't get sworn in, but we want everybody to see him. And he's operating out of a community center right now and we've got great, great plans in his future.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, we have a proclamation here, a national night out proclamation. And it's signed, will be signed by me. Uh, I, Mayor, uh, Robert Chakford, do hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant, the general of the Mount Pleasant Police Department, the National Association of Town Watch, according to the 33rd Annual Na- uh, National Night Out on August 2nd, 2016. Further, let it be resolved that I, uh, Mayor Robert Chakford, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016, as National Night Out in the city of Mount Pleasant.
And that night, we are also, um, adding water day to National Night Out, so we want everybody to come out to the community center at 5:00 PM on August 2nd.
You're not signing the proclamation yet.
You signed it.
How hard is that?
I got the pretty one signed. We got you.
Okay, that's a little fancy. No, that's not.
No, this is your signature, it's just a little.
Yeah, well, it's got a little riddle on it. Okay. Uh, mayor's appointment to the fire board. Uh, I have a, we understand it, uh, been approved by the fire board to, for a short period of time of three meetings, three months. And then I will give up that to whoever the new mayor is that comes in and whoever the, the new mayor appoints and, and is approved by the new city commission. And, uh, so I'm just gonna be on the board a short period of time.
We do need.
Oh, what about Phil then?
I make a motion that we approve Mayor Chakford's nomination.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, that I said. Uh, next item on our agenda is to fill Commissioner George Vessel's seat.
I'd like to make a motion for Jim Bailey to fill that position.
Okay, each, each commissioner will have a vote as they want.
Right, well, that's, I mean, I'm just saying.
That's the first nomination that will take a vote.
That's the first.
I'd like to say a motion.
Okay.
Excuse me, but Taylor, if that is voted on, is that?
That'll be fine. Do you have a motion that is settled on the floor, so then you all vote to decide?
Right.
And the majority, uh, person who gets the vote will be on. Okay, does, does anybody else want to put another on the floor? Get daddy. We have four, we have four people.
There is a motion and a second, so at that point you will vote, Mayor. This was a tough decision.
We have. We have a motion and a second for Jim Bailey to fill out the three-month term of George Vessel. And I assume he's gonna run for the two-year term after this, finish out the rest of his time.
If I could last three months.
Won't be easy.
Count my words up, please.
Anyway, we have a motion and a second to, to, uh, put George Vessel in, put Jim Bailey in George Vessel's place for, uh, till the next election. All in favor say aye.
We have a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Fraser?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Chakford?
Yes.
And Blackett?
Yes.
Mayor, we're ready to have him sworn in this evening.
Yes. Yes. I would like to say, and I said this at the business meeting, our planning meeting, study sessions, but I would hope that the other three candidates that put their names in, um, would have, there are going to be three positions to fill on our, in addition to Mr. Vessel's position. That we have, um, consider putting in their, their ballot for a four-year term so that we would have a, um, commission. If you're interested in that, that was a sincere, because we had, as, as, um, Mike said, that, and Mr. Davis said, I've never seen four more candidates that were, um, reading your resumes and looking into what you had done for our community and what you were willing to do. Four more candidates that were more qualified and eager to serve the community of Mount Pleasant. It was truly a pleasure and delightful to see that and I want to thank everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have a comment?
You'll come up, Mr. Bailey?
Can he be sworn in and take the seat tonight?
I've got a packet for somebody called new commissioner.
I don't.
You can call a lot of things. That'd be all right. I have a dog or they call that.
I'm gonna fill your name in now. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the constitution.
That I will uphold the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Tennessee.
State of Tennessee.
And laws and ordinances.
And laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
City of Mount Pleasant.
And the performance of my duty.
Performance of my duty.
As commissioner.
As commissioner.
For the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
City of Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There you go. We already have a homework assignment.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something before I sit down up here? I'm, I'm sorry that Ms. Vessel got away. Um, it's a great honor to have been selected not to take George Vessel's place because you can never take the place of, of a good public servant. In my career, I have, uh, seen many men and women deceive commissioners and so forth, but it is an honor for me and I will try to serve in his capacity, in his seat, not in his place, to the best of my ability. I promise you that, Marky. George and I had a nice long visit just a short few months ago and I was very impressed with his love of Mount Pleasant and his desire to do good works. Never dreamed at that time, he said in my living room, that we would actually be in this situation. It took me 47 years to come back to this position. Actually, a long time to do things, apparently, but I was 29 years old when I elected to the Mount Pleasant City Commission. Nothing like this nice facility. And a lot, a lot of water over there down, but I'm true, I came to Mount Pleasant 50 years ago. Uh, this is in fact in August next month, so been here quite a while and almost got accepted. Not a native like Bobby is, but I'm still, uh, you know, they said for a long time, he's from Columbia, he's from Columbia, you know. Kinda got with that, but I'm proud to be here, I'm honored to be here, I appreciate the, the vote, I appreciate the others that sought the job and, uh, certainly, but hope they will, like you said, leave and run for office. Uh, I'm, you know, this, this is an honor and I do appreciate it, thank you. My, my number 698-640. I've never kept a secret about trying to make myself available, so I welcome the job and thank you very much, commissioners, for honoring me by this.
I guess it'd be for attorney. Does the vice mayorship go along with his election? That would be right. Actually, I need to review the charter on that because I'm not sure if that automatically takes his position or not. If you have to appoint the vice mayor.
I think it's voted by the commission.
It's voted, yeah. Select you by.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that section of the charter.
And Mayor, you can choose to do that this evening or the next evening, but I believe that's the vote of the commission.
Well, it's, it still isn't, it's a thing to do.
I'd like to make a motion for Jim taking George's position. I'd like to be in his place.
All right. We have a motion and a second, right?
I don't, no, I haven't heard a second.
How about, how about a second motion? Okay, we have a motion, uh, to, uh, make Jim Bailey our, uh, vice mayor. And all in favor say aye. All, all opposed?
Your very first vote.
Here's another, another question, uh, if, if Jim wins reelection, uh, he's not gonna automatically be vice mayor because we have to, we're gonna elect a mayor and a vice mayor with the new bunch that comes in here in November.
Yes. The new commission will appoint who they choose for mayor and vice mayor.
Just wanted everybody to understand that. I didn't fully understand it myself. Okay. We have a certificate of compliance here, but I'm gonna try to pronounce this, Joseph Wabba.
Did you take a formal vote on the vice mayor position? I know it was made and seconded. Is it all a?
I seconded.
He didn't vote, but all voted.
Okay, reported nothing and Doris seconded it. I'm sorry, we're sorry.
So, but you want a roll call or you just?
Yeah, that's good.
Solid.
Okay. We have here a application of advice from Joseph Wabba. He waved back in the back, he's trying to hide.
Yes.
We're not gonna let him.
And we all call him Joe. Mayor, this certificate of compliance is required with what he is trying to do with his location on Main Street of, uh, creating, um, a liquor store and a deli. And the process that he goes through here is certificate of compliance. I'll have the chief of police stand up as far as a background check. And then he has quite a bit of work to do with, at the state level as well, because it's all through the ABC to get a license to have a liquor store. So, chief, all of the, uh, background checks?
Uh, Mr. Wabba, Joe, as we call him, everything's fine. He checked out here, Columbia County. Yeah, nowhere.
So this is a, being a long process for him.
At least he never paid his license, granted money for selling the miners or nothing like that out there. So, no. The crash landing, that location correct?
Correct. And that would have to be, uh?
We would know his crash.
Yes, and there's quite a bit of physical work that needs to be done at that building before it will be allowed, if my understanding.
It's good.
Is the deli going to have a liquor, a beer license, they asked them, or a beer award?
Do you have intentions of having beer at the deli, or just-
No, ma'am, just the deli.
Okay.
No beer, just the deli.
Thank you.
You want?
Okay, do we need to vote on this certificate of compliance tonight?
I would, yes, please.
Anybody have any more questions than that? This certificate? If not, we need somebody to entertain a motion?
You're basically accepting.
So we're just accepting the work that was done already, so I make a motion to accept this certificate of compliance as presented with the information we were given.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept this certificate of compliance. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? So the ayes aye.
So Mayor, we will have something for you to sign in the next couple of days.
All right. Next item on our business, completion and review of unfinished pages from prior meetings. We have an ordinance two thousand sixteen dash nine eighty-six. This is final reading we're going to have in one. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the City of Mount Pleasant as set forward in Title fourteen, Chapter two of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code. Explain that for us.
Okay, this is the final reading for the zoning ordinance that accepts the zoning map. It's on the wall over there. It takes, it's on the ground, I'm sorry. It's the one on the ground, the white one on the ground, which Taylor's right. That takes us from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and sixteen on our zoning map, and it's already been approved, first reading, and it's been approved by the Planning Commission.
Mr. Ochs, if you mind lifting it up, this is a public concern.
Yes, you want me to?
This is the zoning map that's being presented tonight for the final reading compared to the color pistol we've utilized in date nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah, and having to go back and forth and back and forth between the different maps.
This is all our zones inside the city. Inside the perimeter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And we're going to address some of the things you brought up, the plant planning commission, it's an August planning commission about M three.
And no zoning has been changed on anything on there. All it is is the map up to date.
Yes.
I'm concerned, King, not an issue.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, approve this on the second final reading.
Okay.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second for approval on the second final reading. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? The ayes aye. Okay, item six, you know, what we just stated, excuse me. We want the item seven approval of monthly budget reports by our Director of Planets.
Mayor, I think as we discussed earlier in our GAC meeting, the June being our year end, the reports you have before you are just the monthly, normal monthly reports, if they don't reflect the final tally for the year, that must be completed by the end of August, and we'll be ready to have our auditors in here September. You have in front of you the, your final budget that you passed last month, and I think you made a couple of changes on there, and those are reflected in your packet there. And also, you have on your desk today the April, May, and June report of the credit card charges, and they are broken down by credit cards, which is, goes by department. That completes my report this afternoon.
Any question on any of those reports, just please let us know.
I have the motion, we approve monthly budget reports.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the monthly budget reports. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, the ayes aye. Monthly report from our City Manager.
Mayor, all the monthly reports are in your packet, and they should be self-plenary, but if there's any questions, the Department Heads would be glad to step up and answer those.
Anybody have any questions to the Department Heads about the monthly report?
This is the chief.
Where do we stand on our fire trucks? I'm sorry.
We stand waiting and waiting. Now, last Friday we talked to them, the cosmetic paint, everything is completed. They sent pictures, it looks very good. Just some small details as they are putting things back together and finishing up, they're finding that they don't like, so they're making sure that that is corrected before they give it to us. Some like leveling valves when you let the levers out, the stadium truck, we took the ladder out, they have one of those valves that are sticking, I like them right. We're replacing that. They had an issue with the wheels and stuff, come to find out, some of the wheels were painted, and they needed to put covers on them. Just some little small time-consuming things, but I asked him specifically, do you think we'll have it in Bobbit for second till it gets out for natural night out? He said yes. Now, if that changes from now on then, can't help it if they find something else. As long as he keeps fixing things and making trouble, the best it's going to be for what rolls out comes to us, I don't have a problem. Because I want them to find it now, or they've got to fix it at their money, then it comes to us, and we have to fix it at our money.
Well, you answered, I had some kids ask me, this is going to be there at the-
We hope it is.
Nashville and the group at the dance.
How long is it in? That's what I was thinking, I mean, even at that time, at that time, you know, you should have been cosmetic, or something, you know.
Like I said, they change whole things.
It's proven this February or March meeting, yeah.
But like I said, you know, they're a smaller company down there, and they do great work. We have good recognition from them, and it's just also, they've caused time of year, the grants and stuff have been awarded, and people are getting new fire trucks, and they're having to get new fire trucks out of their facilities, the fire departments, so it's been a busy time for them, but like I said, as long as they are taking their time and making sure that everything on the trucks right before we get, I don't have a problem right now.
But you did have a problem with us.
Well, I mean, you didn't know to get it started. You've got to start somewhere. I don't want to wait to help you, but not yet.
I have another question for me. Sometimes when you call about something else, I happen to call the sod farm about sod for the football field, and the lady there lives at the subdivision here, Stephen, she wanted to know about the entrance over at the subdivision, and I can't remember what street, by the funeral home.
Yeah, on the roadside.
Are we, is the city responsible for the maintenance of that entrance or do-
Nobody's ever made, it's Mike Floyd's.
Have you seen it in the last couple of days? It's still completely cleaned up?
Well, that's what I noticed. I noticed that it had, and I had asked, so I didn't know what to tell her. It's Jackie, who asked me, and she-
We had, I had talked to Robert about it, just talking to Mike Floyd about it, and then it was taken care of within the day.
That's what she, she's just, we have some, she's the secretary of Jackie, and she asked me, but I asked, and I said I would as a medium tonight, and then it was cleaned up, so I just wanted to let her know who did clean it up.
Cleaned it up at the same time that sign went up saying lots available, so I think those were tied together.
Oh, okay, well, that answers the question. Okay, thank you.
Let me ask fire engine, fire engine question, about a truck. How much money did we pay on the fire engine that we hadn't had to dump it?
Paid the down payment of thirteen- Thirteen nine.
Thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's down payment.
Is that all we paid so far?
Yes, and the lease and payments and stuff won't start to deliver, so it's not like they're paying a lease for something they don't have, but we said-
We had to pay that to get the work started.
They have to have, you know, a commitment that they're going to take to the truck.
And I'd like the Fire Department to know, and that steel, because it sure got done quickly.
Men Smelter Services and all those people-
Whoever was involved got it done real quickly.
They done an excellent job, and they had the equipment and the know-how, and they done a great cleanup. Even the seed dump people, they cleaned it better than some of the professional cleanup people that they've worked with before.
So I'd like to ask the Chief another question, sort of, even the fire department, about that. Have you noticed anything last month about, you know, lost smell? Any of the guys complained?
You know, it's just, you could go weeks and not smell it, and then you could come in one morning and you'd get that ammonia smell, but really, Mike, I haven't noticed it in a week or two. I haven't, and like I said, sometimes it comes in early morning, and it's gone, you know, before eight o'clock, so just might be missing it, but I haven't had anybody just come in and to the fire hall itself, and had any complaints or anything about it.
Who do we need to report that to? Because when we were talking up here, I live right there, it's been bad. It has been really bad with the odor of the smell the past couple of weeks, and I don't know, um-
Do you know, do you feel like you know exactly where it's coming from? That's a problem.
No, it's two different odors. One, you can tell when it's the salt cave, because that's that ammonia that burns your eyes and just stings, and that. But there's another odor, and it's sticky sweet odor, and it comes from across the road, like this, behind, next to Sunoco. It is not Sunoco, it's the plant behind-
Six, two?
No, it's behind Sunoco, and I have the card from the man, because I melt, and that's the man who works there, the plant manager, with the grill.
Mr. Plant?
Ms. Blackish, you're probably speaking of Kylie Container?
Yes, that's what it is.
What's her first name?
Kylie Container.
Okay.
Who do we call, or I can write down the date to do that, and I talked to the overseer at the landfill, so he, you know, call him and let him know, but to do, what do they do to regulate, we need to find out and who do-
You talked to Sam Kelly? Okay.
But what do we do to, do they come out and check that when it's like that?
Because I want to make sure it's the landfill and not TAP itself.
What I'm sort of worried about, and I base it, you know, we need to N S D F and these chemicals that they're, that they're working with that.
At the, at the container plant, because we don't know what's in this, and we know what's in the salt cave.
Did inspection at Kylie Container, that is the sweet smell that you're smelling? When I was there, the exhaust system was off. I did do a reinspection on them, they said they had that sick, so with exhaust system working, that may be why you're smelling that again, if you hear anything about it.
And we got the hazards associated with that, too?
Yes, sir. They are a lot of different types of chemicals, but they won't have a flash point above one forty, I believe, so it's kind of not regulated by the state. So they have their way of detecting when they bring it in, but not a lot of regulation there.
I mean, you know, if you can smell it, I mean, that's, you know, it's in your system.
But the day I did do the inspection, they said the exhaust system was not working, so cited them, and then went back, it was working. And now that it's working, I think there's some more smells in.
When you cite them, is there any penalty? Okay, well, let me incite it.
No, sir, I give them thirty days, that's what we defined in our guidelines, and then after thirty days, we give them another thirty, and then we start doing the inspection.
But if we, so if we detect that, is that, any citizen or any calls to the Fire Department and let them know that?
We definitely go by and do another complaint.
I mean, is that what we do, to make the complaint to registers and call the Fire Department? Because I'll get the call in my house, but-
We're complaint room, so we need to call, and you saying you're going to keep attractive dates and times, that's a bit of a stick.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling them, and that's how it is. I mean, because I live right there, and sometimes at night, you'll be driving home, if you're driving home at eleven, twelve o'clock at night, it's the, I know that smell from the landfill, or if it's from TAP.
Those are two different distinct odors, they are. The sweet smell you're talking about is not the landfill.
So you're saying then, Philip, if a plane goes out, they can keep operating for thirty more days?
No, sir, the day I done it inspection, because I had some VOCs on my monitor, volatile organic compounds, so it wasn't out of her limit, but I said, look, we've got to fix this, so a time-weighted average may be detrimental to employees over time. So I cited it for that and a few other things. In the thirty days, he fixed every one of them. So the exhaust system is working again, which may be the reason that you're smelling the sweet odor. Because when it's not working, you may not be smelling it.
Does your report go to OSHA or anything like that?
No, sir, it's just for local cities. And they do have, and they do have OSHA inspections, I do believe, but that's, you know, kind of outside our area.
But they're definitely subject to OSHA.
But definitely complain based, to call us, and we will go, go to plain inspection.
Oh, as far as that, is that, they go directly to the Fire Department, and then go dispatch so that it makes sure everything's logged?
As long as it gets to us, and we, however you want to do it.
And you guys log it?
Fire Department has everything logged, everything they do.
Nothing we don't do, it's not logged.
And answering Ricky's question, did you say you want to go dispatch or directly to the Fire Department?
However we get the message.
Either way, if the fire on this premier, what number they want to call your way, it's going to get, it's going to get back to court each one.
Well, the people that live on that end of town, they don't have to suffer today. And we are lax in doing anything about it, and we ought to be able to ride between town and your home, and not have to breathe that stuff. We ought to be able to walk out on the back porch in the morning, get up, get a breath of fresh air. And, you know, we, we worked hard for our homes, and we shouldn't have suffered today.
Mayor, I'll check and see if there's another state agency that we should be making these calls into as well, and report back to you.
T-Dex is kind of a toothless type, I'll tell you that, yeah. I think they're the ones that's supposed to be regular.
Maybe EPA, maybe EPA, so.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about, and it's also in our charter, that's smoke, NOxus gases-
North pollution.
And it's not necessarily, you know, T-Dex, we have regulations in our charter that's not being enforced. Okay. To move on to special reports from other state departments and committees. Do we have any special reports?
We do not.
Okay. All right, we've got quite a few ordinances to go through, and some resolutions. Not sure how many of them it is, it looks like maybe seven, eight of them, maybe.
Like five ordinances and three resolutions.
Okay. It's a, it's a question that might oppose to me, but I don't know what they're talking about. Is a ordinance different from a resolution? I mean, do you, you have to have a public hearing on one of, for you?
You have to have public notice before final passage on an ordinance? You may, Taylor, you may want to comment on that? I mean, well, I mean, just logistically, a resolution is one reading, and ordinance is two.
A resolution is one reading.
Ordinance is two, and it's set before the second reading, we have it published in the paper.
And some ordinances are required by statute, whereas everything else may be just by resolution. Sometimes it's a matter of logistics, can you do it on one or even on two, but then there's also those requirements, which can be rounded sometimes. Well, for example, a budget, that has to be by ordinance, that can't be by resolution. So there's certain things like that that you have to do, but other than that, you can do most everything by resolution unless it's required otherwise.
When we're raising fees, a lot of budget, rezoning, or anything like that, we always do a budget, so it's got two readings and has notification in the paper.
That's, is that ordinance, or is that resolution?
An ordinance is two readings. Like, for instance, the ordinance that's on here about the map, that's been in the paper as up for final reading.
And we just have, regulation-wise, is that that one reading on a resolution?
Yes, sir.
We've got to mix your vote there, I agree, while I want to get straight.
We want to mix it up a little bit for you.
All right, you business, and comments from citizens may be included, and we get to, keep your thought in mind, if you want to comment on some of this, we're going to talk about it on these resolutions, and you'll have three minutes to get up to the podium here, and say whatever you want to about the resolution, or a particular resolution. All right, item, item A is ordinance two sixteen dash nine eight seven, first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the City of Mount Pleasant as set forward in Title fourteen, Chapter two of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code regarding omission of language from zoning text. from zoning text.
Mayor, uh, this ordinance 987, um, was approved at the planning commission, and the key language here is omission of language. The language in the current ordinance says that if you are going to live above, um, a building in a commercial area, that you must be the owner of the business below for an employee, and we are omitting that language to allow others to, to have a mixed use where others can live above a business.
Okay, are they ever, are they going to be allowed to go in and out, to go upstairs apartment through the business down below?
Typically, they have a separate entrance.
So they, we ran it out, right?
Yes.
So each one of them going to have a separate?
Sometimes they're in back, sometimes they're in front, but yes.
What about fire escape, is that a regulation?
It, it, it gets to be a stricter regula, regulation where you have to have a, it's a firewall, the correct word, between first floor and the second floor, if you have a residential above a, uh, it costs more to renovate a building that way, if you're going to allow that mixed use.
Then they all have this fire system and see them, you know?
These older buildings.
Which Robert says, if there'll be an architect's design, anything that comes through here, and, uh, which is great, because it's going to have all those codes in there when it comes through Robert's office, and of course, we're going to take it.
I understand, you know, all the, whatever.
No, grandfather.
Okay.
New construction, new rule.
Yeah, no doubt.
Anytime new construction, it's like fast, coming flash, it's worth calling, how's the car?
Yeah, we definitely want to spark this.
One problem we had with that when we had a study session was about parking. Somebody lives upstairs with his family, uh, more likely is going to want to park out front. And we already have parking problems, especially on court day. And the way I understand it, y'all wanted to kind of get the car full of the horse, y'all going to work out the parking situation after you got this approved.
Right.
My contention is, the parking situation ought to be worked out before we pass this.
I guess what our position was, there's no reason to work that out if you don't have that passed, and, and I can show you, Mayor, maybe the next time you're in my office, that who owns the land in front and behind, there's plenty of parking, but we will have to have a parking plan. And so there will be parking, and some of the people that may reside there will be parking behind, and that will be their designated, but we're not going to allow, um, residential housing without parking available for them. And obviously, the commercial businesses need parking as well.
That's what, that's what we're saying, all right, it must be in front of the business.
It, it might be on one part of Main one way, and in another part of Main, depending on where the parking is, it may change. We're going to have a parking plan for the whole downtown area.
Well, for example, if you go to Columbia, if you go to the bicycle shop, there's an apartment above the bicycle shop. The people that rent that apartment cannot park in the front in the square, they have to park in the back of the store.
They have a designated parking behind that, and they planned that in their planning in
the city of Columbia, once they designated those apartments as residential, and they put that in there, because there are several of them that did that. They also did that when they made businesses upstairs, for instance, where Tom Harden's office is, he cannot park on the street, he got to park in the back, in the, in the back of the, because it's limited parking on their streets, it's too...
I think I gave the example, when I was in Columbia back in 1995, it was against the law to live downtown, so they've come that far that they've changed that. But it will require us to have a plan, and we want everybody to have parking, and that's an important part of it, but there was no reason to develop a plan if we weren't going to allow the mixed use.
But I hope we don't like the plan and we're like, you park, you want to do.
I think if you've got active business, we don't want the residence parking there, correct, agreed, yeah.
The one standing upstairs may not be the business owners of them.
Right.
The one upstairs doesn't care whether he's blocking business, potential business, going into the man's store or not.
Right, but that, that...
They're going, they're going to be parking out on the street from where they are in the back.
But those units upstairs won't be approved until the parking's designated where they're going to be, and obviously, a commercial needs the front parking.
Well, this is calling for approval of the hearing.
This is calling for approval of admitting the language and allowing the mixed use where you don't have to be the owner or an employee to live there, is all saying.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I need, yes.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance 2016-987?
Okay, have a motion and second for approval. Uh, ordinance 2016-987, all in favor, say aye. Okay, I'm all, I'm all vote no.
We'll do a roll call. Fraser?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chasprue?
No.
Lincoln Chip?
Yes.
Baby?
Yes.
Don't worry, you're voting no, maybe just...
Okay, what, we ain't got parking problems, we've got a problem, man, with parking.
Four, four one, huh?
Yes, four one.
Another problem we have with parking, we're supposed, anybody uses a parking space on a regular basis, you're supposed to pay $10 a month for that use, and we've never charged anybody, for example, this cooker, it's set over here grill, or Doc's little barbecue grill.
The, the cooker for the grill has been moved, and that we are...
It's been set there two years, and that was charged in, that's the point I'm trying to...
Right, no, I agree, and, uh, we're working on this other cooker, but we're also learning that all these parking spots are, are, are owned state road, and we can't charge rent for a road that we don't own. So I know that that is in the charter, but we're, we're looking into that.
Well, how do we charge when we have parking meters all up and down the street?
I have no idea how to answer that question.
Well...
But it's a state route.
You said we couldn't charge, we did for years.
Yep. We're, we're, we're just looking into it, and that's what we're finding out in first blush, so...
Uh, this ordinance, uh, 2016-987 passes. Okay, move on to next ordinance, which is 216-988, first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant is set forth in Title 12, Chapter 2 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code regarding planning and zoning fees.
Mayor, this, uh, ordinance is also in front of the planning commission, it was approved, and it is simply addressing the planning and zoning fees that are charged, where we are accepting plans and reviewing them and, um, not collecting at least even the minimum of what it costs, uh, the work to be done to make a recommendation to the planning commission.
We're not charging enough for first inspection, and then if the code man has to go back two or three times, he's not charging any additional fee for that.
A lot of this is what we're paying planners in Nashville to review plans as well, and we're not recusing that money. So this is getting us, um, equal to similar sized cities, and, and we're way behind on our fees.
This is just application, so it's not inspection, and this one all?
Paying the zoning fee, these are, a plan comes before, uh, me, I have to review, we have to pay planners, and then we make recommendations to bring them forward to the planning. So that's, that's...
You have, you're in the process of the inspection part of the...
Planner, he's not a physical inspection, but planner, yes.
I make a motion, we accept it. Ordinance 2016-988.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Uh, to pass ordinance, uh, 2016-988, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Ordinance passes. Move on to the next ordinance, which is the ordinance, uh, 216-989, first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant is set forth in Title 14, Chapter 2 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code regarding the location of public utilities. When is the reason why we have to do this? Bring this ordinance up.
Yes, you're correct, Mayor. This was in front of the planning commission and also was approved, but it was determined when we, we were questioned on utility locations in our, um, zoning ordinance, that we were not very clear on where they were allowed or they weren't allowed, and I don't know if Taylor, you've talked, if you want to talk anymore, but it was very, um, unclear, and we felt like we needed to clarify where you could put utilities.
I think that's a good summary. Um, there really was not any language addressing utility locations at all, so upon second look, it looked like that that is necessary in that ordinance to make this change.
As a courtesy take, I guess, you know, when we do these things, you know, to let the, we know, and know, you know, what we're going to do, before we, before we do.
Um, are you talking about signage, or what?
Yeah, I guess, you know, when you're trying to do, we're doing it like this.
And that's definitely before you can pass that on second reading, it has to be advertised, for sure.
Make a motion to approve 2016-989.
We have a motion of approval, all in, uh, have a second, okay? Have a motion and second for approval, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Motion passes. All right, we got to turn over on the back tonight, I believe that's the time we would have done that. Uh, okay, ordinance, uh, 2016-990, an ordinance amending the municipal code, city of Mount Pleasant, is set forth in Title 12, Chapter 1 regarding update to current code and fees associated with building permits.
Mayor, right now, the city is under the 2009, um, building code, and the state is in the process of updating to the 2012 building code, and we want to be right in sync with the state when they adopt that, uh, this summer, and so we want, that's why we're requesting that we adopt the 2012 building code, and this is, uh, where we get into fees associated with building permits as well.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-990.
Okay, we have a motion, need a second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pass. Ordinance 2016-990, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote? Two ayes, aye. Ordinance, uh, number 2016-991, an ordinance modified, Title 7, Fire Protection and Fire Works of the Mount Pleasant Tennessee Municipal Code regarding an update to the fire code.
Mayor, this is very similar to what you just voted on for the building code, but this is the fire code, and our current fire code that we're following is 2006. The state is going to be at the 2012 level, and we want to be at the same level as the state, and so we're requesting the fire protection and fireworks ordinance be updated to 2012.
Anybody have any questions?
Make a motion to approve 2016-990.
Okay, we have, have a motion, all approval, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All votes, okay, the ayes, aye. Uh, ordinance, 2016-991 is approved. Move on to the next ordinance, it's a resolution, rather than an ordinance, this is a resolution. Uh, 2016-19, a resolution requesting the city of Mount Pleasant to receive 5% tax increments financing on the USD project. That's our tile plan out there.
Yes. Um, Mayor, at the study session, we talked about, when this project was planned years ago, there was a tax increment financing plan set up where the tile plant was allowed to borrow $5,217,000, and so until the real estate taxes and the personal property state taxes, personal property taxes, I'm sorry, totaled at $5,200,000, the city does not benefit, except that they are allowed to request 5% of this final column on the right, the increment. So ultimately, over the term of time, we'll be collecting all of this, the real property and personal property tax, and I, and this is very underestimated in my mind, I think that the property tax and the personal property tax is going to be higher, but in the meantime, we can request 5% of that far right number, which Loretta and I determined to be anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 a year. This first will start July 1st of 2016, and we should get half of that at the end of this calendar year, but you have to request it, and that's what this resolution is. The county is going to request it, uh, as well, I believe in their target meeting.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2016-19.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, to pass resolution 2016-19, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote? Two ayes, aye. Move on to the next resolution, which is 2016-20. A resolution authorizing the Murray County Election Commission to conduct a special election within the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Pleasant on Tuesday, November 8th through 16th, to fill the remainder of George Vestal's term, and pursuant to the election laws of the state of Tennessee. Okay, the remainder of George Vestal's term is two years, right?
Correct. So we already have an election in November for the three positions that are up for a four-year term, but we had to officially request a special election from the election commission for this, uh, remainder of Mr. Vestal's term, and by passing this, you allow that, and I just wanted to let you know, we did talk with Tom Baxter's office, and as soon as he gets this resolution signed from us, anybody can come in and request a packet for the two-year term, and also want to let people know that they will be able to vote in early voting for both the two-year terms and the three, four-year terms. No cost to the city, maybe because it's already, yeah, watching, it's already happening.
I'll make a motion, favor, version 2016-1.
We, we have a motion and a second to pass resolution 2020. 16-20, all in favor, say aye. All votes? Okay, the ayes, aye. Moving on to resolution 2016-21. A resolution of the governing body of the city of Mount Pleasant, amending resolution 2013-1, authorizing the renewal and reissuance and sale and payment of an interest-sparing interfund capital outlay note not to exceed $166,716.66.
Mayor, this is an interfund loan owed to the gas company, and it's required to be, um, basically renewed every three years, and, um, that's why this resolution's on the agenda. We've already, we are paying it off from sewer to gas, correct?
And it is up to date at this point?
You remember before it was behind, because it was missed, but it is up to date right now.
And this debt is on what?
It was, it's from the sewer plant to pay back the gas.
Money, money that the sewer system borrowed from the gas.
Yeah, back in, um, the original, was in 2010, it was originally.
Do, when we borrow money like that, do we have any control over the interest rate on that part, nothing?
We usually use the, uh, interest rate that, oh, we get on, oh...
Is it set up the state?
Controller's office, yes, they, they approve it.
We're borrowing money from ourselves, and we don't have control over the interest rate.
So what we're doing is we're paying the rates that we're receiving on, oh, on the, uh, investment, which right now, not much.
Because each fund has to stand alone, the controller's office can step in and say what, we can borrow that money at what rate?
We know that. It's like the media, we can borrow money from all the money, and not have to pay the interest rates on it anyway. We understand, we got to pay the price.
Well, it's going from one fund to the other, and the enterprise funds have to stand on their own, and that's why you have to charge the interest, if each fund has to, if those are enterprise funds, then they have to stand on their own.
What's the interest rate?
This one is 0.5%.
Very low.
Yeah, 0.5%.
Very weird.
You're going to make a...
I'm making a motion to pass 2016-21.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass 2016-21. Yeah, yeah, so...
These were adopted in 2010, or they're running, what's, what's the length?
This should be the last year, this is the last...
Nine plus three, three for maximum, or twelve?
Right, yeah.
So nine, nine, and this is...
Nine?
It couldn't have been nine.
So 2010... Two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
This is the last leg of that.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor. You have more discussion?
It says our annual interest rate is just 0.02.
I looked it up, I think the other one was more 0.3. Okay, the last, even less.
Yes, I just remember you telling me that from that insurance.
Sorry about that, I was thinking about the other one.
It's pretty much give me, but they have to be out. I'm sorry, that was just...
Okay. We already have a motion and a second, all in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution 216-21, okay. We're on item 11 now on the agenda, comments from the citizens. If any citizen out there is... I don't know, we got a sheet out there, you're supposed to sign in if you want to talk.
You're going to do it.
Anyway, anybody that's really heard anything during the meeting that want to get a comment about it. Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir.
You, Mr. Moore?
I am, yes, sir.
Oh, good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm R.D. Moyers with Insulating Services and also of I.S.I. Holdings in Tennessee. I think with regard to your new business, item 10, paragraph C, that stated changing of the zoning ordinance with regard to location of public utilities. I think perhaps that was the case that the city manager was referring to, was a case that we had came before the Planning Commission and first asked for a devernal. Then, on another occasion, this was beginning in December, then in January, we had our attorney explain that it was not within zoning ordinance for the substation to be placed on the property that it was proposed to. And I don't know what this language has to do with or what the umbrella will be on that. I just pray that you will consider and carefully craft any language where that we don't have to revisit that. We inevitably, we had to seek relief in chances for it, and we prevailed. Now, the, there may be an appeal, we don't know, the time's running out. And we, once again, believe that any substation, if this is indeed addressing the substation, I don't know. But we believe that a substation would be detrimental to our operation, to the value of our property. And actually, there's a reason why they're usually located in remote areas. They're a little bit dangerous to the general public. I actually almost was electrocuted because of the leaking insulator on a high voltage system. And so had a hot ground, and it was going to all the grounds in the local area. But I just happened to be a hotter ground when I touched a ground rod, and, man, it lit me up. And so I would beg of you to carefully consider crafting language to where that we don't have to go back and rehash this, revisit it. We see no need of it, but we pray that you would carefully consider crafting your language. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
Can I make a couple other small, short announcements? We only meet once a month, so...
Mayor, you got to call the...
You need to dabble. I just want to let everybody know that on August 2nd, we're going to have a groundbreaking for the Cherry Glen spec building out there, about eight or nine in the morning. You'll get information about that, but I wanted to let everybody know that, that we're moving forward with that. And I believe everybody's aware that the South Central Development District is submitting a grant for Mount Pleasant to have a Tennessee College of Applied Technology. We had 20 letters of support, 12 of those were from industry, so we've got a very good application, and that can be submitted next week. And then the final thing, I wanted to show people, and we're going to try and figure out how to put this in the lobby, but this is a tile that was made in the tile plant. This is number 61 of 100, and it says, July 1st, 2016, Mount Pleasant Landmark Ceramics, first tile collection proudly produced in the United States. Be part of a new American landmark, be part of an exciting American experience. So we're pretty proud of that, and we'll have that on display for everybody to see. That's all I have.
Okay.
You got it, Mayor.
This meeting is adjourned.
Well, we have some classes out there, it's free, Captain. And I'll get all the... Free services for free.